Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, January 22, 2020. Could I please ask that everyone stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So just so the committee and the public know, Dr. Giblin had an unexpected family situation, so she will not be here with us for the meeting tonight, but we will move right along in our agenda. So first item is approval of minutes. We have in our packet the copy of the business meeting from Wednesday, January 8, and also the executive session on Wednesday, January 8 as well. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All of you there?
Aye.
Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Uh, there is not, no.
Okay. So next up is warrants. There's a couple of warrants behind me for the committee to sign tonight. We have six building and ground warrants in the amounts of $10,288.22, $9,818.39, $24,494.35, $56,073.77, $26,828.96, and $25,983.69. We have one food services warrant in the amount of $1,079.2, and then seven account payable warrants, first for $18,214.7, $10,279, $2,522.6, $2,664.51, $2,446.1, $32,94.85. Lastly, $2,109.41 for a grand total of $224,977.31. Is there any conversation or questions around the warrants tonight? Great. This time is public forum. Is there anybody here to speak to the school committee under anything under our purview? CNN declare public forum closed, and moving right along to announcements. Dr. Thompson?
Uh, I'm gonna, I have a couple, but I'll save it for the superintendent's report.
Okay. So now we're on to our appearances. We do have three guests this evening for our capital outlay requests, Mr. Kidd, Mr. Cardy, and Mr. Bishop. I'm not sure if he wants to go first or all together. Perfect.
All together. Safety in numbers.
Thank you for joining us and patiently waiting for us to get started.
Thanks for having us come. So this year for our technology capital funding requests, we have a few items, a few, a couple of large items that need to be addressed. We have some network switch replacements at the high school that need to be done, and two at the high school, two at the Savage here. Those are E-rate eligible. The Norwood High School ones are E-rate eligible, so we'll get a 60% discount on those. Excuse me. You know, these switches are approaching 10 years old and need to be replaced. And we'll have some more of those at the high school next year for next year's capital, but you can see that later on in the report. But we, our E-rate reimbursement cycle resets after this year, so our budget for E-rate discounts gets reset, so we can do some more of those switches at the high school. We couldn't do all of them this year because our E-rate reimbursement budget isn't big enough to do all of them. We have our annual laptop replacements. You know, laptops that'll be six years old, the teacher laptops that are used both inside and outside of their classrooms, hooked up to their smart boards and projectors, but they're also taking the PD, taking home for work reasons each night. We're trying to get everybody onto a four-year laptop refresh cycle, so these numbers help us do that. One of our biggest things that we need to do is a new phone system, which is applied. When the high school was built, there was a different phone system put into the high school than there is the rest of the district. And so we're, we have been living with two separate phone systems in the district, and then both are extremely old now, and we want to take this opportunity to unify those phone systems. We're also looking at, the town is, the town of Norwood is looking to do some VoIP homework, and Norwood Light just did their new building, so we're looking, we've been working with them a little bit and looking at what they've gotten to see if there's sort of anything that we can do along with them to unify them. It doesn't have to be that way, but it might help with redundancy and knowledge and things of that nature. So we're working a little bit with them, but it is something that we need to address this summer if we can. We've gotten a few different quotes, and like I said, we're also looking into what the systems that the town in the light department will get as well. This had on our, on our capital plan for a couple of years, last couple of years, kind of letting everyone know that this is coming. It's our Norwood High School classroom audiovisual replacement. Again, the projectors and the interactive boards at the high school are the same ones that were installed nine, eight, nine years ago now. The boards that were put in are no longer made. They haven't been, the company went out of business. They haven't been made for a few years now. We replace, you know, we've replaced the number of projectors, you know, onesie twosies every, every year. As they start to fail, they're starting to fail at a larger rate, and, you know, we need to update the wiring and, and the devices and the classrooms. So we're looking to do that this year. We're doing a, looking to do a wireless access point refresh in three phases for three years. We're looking to replace about 45 wireless access points in our elementary schools, including the Willett, that are nearing end-of-life support. The wireless access points do qualify for E-rate reimbursement, so we'd be paying, you know, we'd get a 60% discount on, on what we purchased there. Again, looking to do this in a three, three-year phase. And we just did the high school a couple of years ago, as you remember, from when we went one-to-one, and replaced approximately 85% of the access points at the middle school at the same time. But now we need to circle back to the elementary schools. The, we, we did about six years ago, seven years ago, we did iPads at the, seven years ago, we did iPads at the Willett classrooms. Each Willett classroom has a four iPad learning center that the teachers use each day with the students as a station, one of the station rotations. Those iPads, they're iPad twos, they don't update their operating system any longer, and as you want to update certain apps, they won't work on the older operating system. The, I met with the Willett principal, Carolyn Robbins, and they're looking to expand that four into a six iPad learning station. They feel that the station rotation works better with a group of six than it does four. So we're looking to put six, six per classroom to replace those. And similarly with the, each elementary school has a cart of iPads, 25 actually, and we did that in two phases. We did 20 the first year and then added five the next year. Just like the Willett, they're all, the 20 in each of those carts are iPad twos, won't update, need to be refreshed. Right now, it's, it's really the first grade classrooms that, that use those iPad, share those iPad carts. Second and beyond are more scroll-based now. But we would still be looking to have the first grade classrooms share those carts. So we'd be replacing 20 iPads in each elementary school in those carts. This next item is our school labs, library AV technology replacement and pre-K expansion. So it's to add interactive projector or LCD interactive screen in our labs and library areas. The labs and libraries that we have now have very old smart board and projectors. I'm going to guess they're about 10 to 12 years old at this point. And as they fail, we can't replace them. We can't, we have to replace them. We can't, you know, add, add bulbs or, or make any repairs. They're just too old. So they're starting to fail. Before they were, you know, pretty manageable, but we've had a couple that have completely failed this year, and more will fail. So we want to do that. We want to add projection, projection in each of the pre-K classrooms. That's something here at that LMTA that hasn't been done yet, and something we've talked about for a few years with the pre-K. It is pretty standard. I've done some research to have, pre-K classrooms have projection devices in their classrooms at this point, and we don't, and I know the teachers and the principal, again, any, a lot of this, a lot of these, I work with the principals on what they need and what the teachers need, and that's something that they've outlined that they need. And we have some classrooms as well at some schools that have, that don't have projectors or smart boards at the elementaries that we want to start putting in to make the schools, as you all know, there's always space issues and moving around classrooms and expanding classrooms each year. We want to try and get at any of those classrooms that don't have projection, so it's a couple fold, twofold, so that it's equitable throughout all the schools, you know, because there's different classrooms in different schools. So because the Calhoun has less classrooms than, say, the Cleveland, you know, the Calhoun art teacher has access to, you know, one ounce of projector while the Cleveland doesn't, you know. And then the other piece is that if classrooms do have to move around, let's say there's a new fourth grade classroom at a school, and they have the option of, you know, being flexible enough to move into a classroom that, you know, if all the rooms have projection in them, it's a lot easier for them to figure out where they can move classrooms, and we don't have to have buildings and grounds taking things down and moving them somewhere else and trying to figure things out. So this would allow us to, you know, plug some of those holes that are in some of the platforms in the schools. And then last is the computer science lab at the high school. They have the pathways program that there's, you know, that they've started with health, but they're expanding that to IT next year using the current program catalog that they have. Mr. Seer at the high school is, is running a computer science, some computer science courses there now. They have computers that they're using that were there from the, when the high school was built. And even though we've gone one-to-one, we, we do fund and replace specialty labs, and this would come under those, under that. So like the graphic arts lab, those students don't use their Chromebooks to do graphic arts work. They use the IMAX that, that were purchased. Similarly with the engineering lab, this, this is similar. They're looking to be able to have Windows devices to be able to do their computer science classes on. And then the rest is, is just some future capital requests, just that are coming down the line. I like to give a couple of years out, just to, you know, anything that we defer, you know, kind of bumps everything else down, obviously, and just to give, give the board an idea of what else is, was, is coming up in the next couple of years.
Joe, can I ask you around the iPads in the first grade and then the Chromebooks second through fifth, why, why do we use different technology in first grade?
It's sort of a bridge between the kindergarten and the elementary. We don't do Google accounts for students in grade one.
Okay.
We do for grade two and on. There has been some discussion about that, but the first grade teachers, for the most part, right now, are more comfortable with the students using iPads without Google accounts, and then eventually transitioning them on to second grade. Though there have been some conversation, there have been some teachers that said, well, you know, maybe we want to start using Chromebooks for the first grade, but there you go.
Do you know, just from like a cost analysis, if we did have first through fifth on all Chromebooks, just out of curiosity?
What the cost difference would be?
Like, we would still, I would assume, need additional Chromebooks, right? Like, we don't have enough Chromebooks right now.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely, yeah, we definitely need to, you know, then, you know, get another cart of Chromebooks for each, each.
Are there questions for Mr. Kidd?
Um, the, the phone replacement is the, obviously, the biggest ticket item.
Yes.
How long a process do you think that would be? I mean, I, it would take a while to, right?
Well, I, we would, that would be a definite summer project, and we should, depending on who the vendor is and how well the project plan is planned, you know, part, part of this quote would be that they would be programming the phones and, and doing a lot of the installation. We would be, we should be able to, in talking to a couple of vendors, get, get it done before the start of school.
Oh, great.
Yeah. At the very, at the, at the, at the very least, we would want to at least cut over, you know, one half, either the high school or the rest of the district, so that, you know, we were on our way and then continue cutting over throughout the year. But our goal would be to completely cut over before the start of the school year.
Okay.
Depending on timing.
Right. Other questions?
I mean, just, I'm sorry, I have to believe it, but our, all our wiring and, since we're already, all the infrastructure's in place for it, so it's just a matter of programming new phones and plugging them in. So it's not too, not too much of a, on, on the infrastructure side of a change.
Okay, thanks.
I'm glad you said that, because we're just putting phones in Clinton, so, but you already have the infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah.
If you didn't have the infrastructure, it wouldn't count.
Yeah, this would be a different, a whole different number in time, in timeline.
So your request for fiscal year '21 for technology is $584,600?
It is.
Yes, okay. Just, just, we're all on the same page.
It is.
Mr. Cardy, would you like to tell us more about your request?
The Buildings and Grounds capital plan is the same plan you've seen for the last 10 or 12 years, just using the same model. We break it down between priority one and two, which is one to three years out, and then priorities three and four, which are three to five years out. And this year, because of our strategic plan, and we set up a security task force, and we also had a meeting up at the high school with all the principals, and I think Teresa was there, and I think Dr. Joan Giblin was there at the task force. And so we pushed a couple of things to the forefront. And our card access system, that's our card swipe system to get into our buildings, is, I mean, it's a theme going here. We're at end-of-life with all of these. They're, you know, they're at least 10 years old, but they've been in the world long before that, and the companies just aren't making replacement parts because they want to make, get you to the next best thing. So we're looking at, we're replacing all of our card swipe systems throughout the, the school. And that, that's 160,000. The intercom systems, both at the meeting we had at the high school and when we had the security task force, they're, you know, our buildings are 48, 50-some-odd years old. The systems are that old, and we keep repairing them, and they keep having little, little issues, you know, room by room. So we really need, again, under the safety thing, we really need, that's the central communication inside our buildings, both for day-to-day stuff, but also for emergency issues. So we really need to get a hold of them. We have not put the cochle on here because we don't know the status of the cochle. We're hoping that we're going to have a new junior high school. We have done some work on the cochle and replaced basically the brains inside the board, but there are still, you know, they have issues in static every once in a while. So those are huge. You're going to see $60,000 for a design study for the high school track and field. They have a 10-year life cycle, and we are approaching 10 years. We're actually at 10 years because it was down basically almost a year before the school opened, so it was subject to the elements. If you go up and look at the track, you know, we probably will get this spring out of the track. I'm not sure. It all depends how, when the officials come out, what they think about whether it's, it should be, you should have a competitive event on it. There's a lot of spaces that are worn out. I think at the end of the day, you know, it's the low bid. We got what we paid for. And, but that, that said, that track is used an awful lot, not only by high school teams, but by the community. And then the field is at its life end, 10 years. We are repairing it two or three times a year, and each year now the rips are happening bigger, and they're ripping easier because the fiber is just breaking down. So we, we need to put out a bid to study that and get ready to, to replace that, hopefully, the following year in both. So while we're doing that, does it make sense, and this is part of a controversial issue, does it make sense to put lights up there? If you're going to dig up the track and remove the field, one would say, if you're ever going to put lights up, that's the time to do it. On top of that, it gets us, the town, ready for two things. If, in fact, we get a new junior high school, and if, in fact, it ends up being behind the old junior high school, so we do like we did when we built the high school, quite possibly, we lose, the town loses two fields for the duration of the construction. So having lights at the high school would help get more use out of that field. If, in fact, we change the start times, especially for fall sports, you know, once we turn the clocks back, it's dock by 10 past 4. And if kids aren't getting to school until 3:30-ish, that's not much practice you can do up there. So I think, you know, pushing for the lights while you're going to do the track and the, and the field makes all the sense for, for better use and to help protect the town going forward if, in fact, we get a new junior high school. Concession stand is on there. We're probably one of the only high school that feels around that does not have a concession stand. And I basically put the number on there that was there 10 years ago when the high school was built, and they try to get the concession stand at the end of the day. And that, that really had a lot to do with the amount of bathroom facilities you'd have to put in it. But I just put that there as a placeholder. So...
Can I just stop you for a minute? But I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying. It's just not lining up with what I'm looking at here. Do we have the list that you're looking at?
Yeah, you should have. It was sent to you guys.
I think we have an older one.
Yeah.
Is none of it's on here?
It's a little different.
You have one dated June, January 7, 2019?
I don't see a date on ours.
No, front page to Karen and...
I can see...
That's last year's. You got last year's.
Yeah.
That will make difference.
I was trying really hard to align with what you were saying. I thought it was me, but, okay.
I got some copies here. That, that is last year's. I sent it to Dave and, I don't think there's enough on the page, back in January. Hey, you want to make a copy of this one?
I'll just make a copy, please.
Okay. Yeah.
Sorry. I don't understand what it's, we're sorry.
You want me to do a little tap dance here while we're doing? The field breaks down to, the track would be $271,000, and the field would approximately be about $474,000. And then if you look, and I don't have my, oh, I got one on here. If, if you look past in years three through five, we're back into the reg, well, you can't see it, yes. But we're back into the regular cycle of floor work to be done. Parking lots, if you drive around our schools, the parking lots, except for really the Prescott, are in deplorable condition, and we keep bumping that off. And that's a hefty price tag. It's $1,006, basically, to replace all the parking lots, excuse me, the high school parking lots. It's okay. But there's a lot of work to be done. And, you know, the question is going to be, how do we do it all? Not only from a manpower point of view, but from a financial point of view. How does, how does this town, the school department grapple with what has to be done? There, there's nothing here, when we did the town-wide, school-wide building study, the work that needed to be done in the elementary schools, the estimate was $43 million.
Right.
That is to bring them up to code and to add some space in some of them to help with potential overcrowding. However, the new junior high ends up might help with some space issues, but they're still a big ticket item. I mean, if you walk into our elementary schools, most people are going to say, and I'm probably repeating myself, but when we walked through with Scott Dunlap from AI3, he said to me, we're actually in the old him, and he said, "You got a real problem here." And I started looking around saying, what's, what are you saying that I'm not saying? And he said, "Your buildings look too good for the average person that's coming in."
Right.
You know, they're clean, the lights are on, it's warm in the buildings, you know, so it becomes a hard sell to say, you know, we gotta, we gotta put, now you all have the right one?
Yeah.
Do you want me to start it again?
No. You did good. Yeah.
So all I'm saying is, you know, going, going forward, you know, past the junior high school, past the high school athletic facility, there's going to be some serious conversations that have to take place in the next, you know, three to six years on, on our elementary schools, and what do we do, and how do we do it? But I think the priority, I know the priorities this year are the safety issues and really the card access and the PA systems are huge issues that, no matter what we really, the code access and the PA systems are huge issues that, no matter what we do end up doing, the elementary schools, that, the PA systems will be intact and the code access systems will, will be there going forward.
So, what's the total for just FY '21?
Well, I, I, I added them up on the front page. For FY '21 and '22, it's $3,004,500, basically. And, but if we just did the top three items, we're talking $560, $620,000. And everything else would slide back and we'd come back next year. But bear in mind, year two of this, the $740,000 for the field and the track is a huge number. Now, but that's, that's a town-wide. I mean, so, for that one, we're thinking it's really town-wide use because if the junior high happens, that field will be an integral part in helping with youth sports as well as high school while the junior high is being built. So, that, that's, that $745,000 is, I want people to think that's a school real ask, that's also a town ask. It's combined.
So, you're saying definitely items one and two on our list, replace door access systems and replace the intercom systems?
Right.
That's your top two?
And then, and then the third is the field, the $60,000 for the design of the field. And then the following year, to go in for the, if this committee so desires, go in for the field and the track and we'd see what else potential.
Yeah, Mara.
So, the old ham floor replacement would be for FY '21, right?
Yes, I'm pushing that off, yeah.
So, but I thought that was FY '21. You wanna move that to FY '22?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. Okay.
What, what I'm doing, Laura, is I, out of the top priority ones, I'm saying there are three that we really should do. And then we could move.
Okay. Is there any danger with the fact that it's asbestos?
No, but the definition, asbestos is a problem when it's friable.
Right.
And airborne. And the definition of friable is with your hand.
Right.
You can pulverize it.
Okay.
That's not with floor tile. And Massachusetts is one of the last states that still regulate asbestos floor tile.
Okay.
So, you know, and, you know, Carlos down at the Coakley keeps that, I mean, excuse me, at the old ham, keeps that place in top shape. And those floors are immaculate and sealed. And we're not having any floor tile popping. I mean, there are some popping, but nowhere near a large amount that we can't handle ourselves.
Okay.
So, the top three items for this year are $620,880. Uh, $620,880?
Yes, yep.
Other questions for Mr. Hardy? You wanna hear from Mr. Bishop?
And, and next year, because we keep saying that we're at the end of life cycles, we'll probably just have holograms of us here. We'll be at the end of our life cycles.
Well, on that note...
Maybe I should start with asking you of the sheet before you was dated 1/13.
Yes.
If, if it is.
It is.
When I first started here, one of the challenges, of course, that I was faced with was trying to bring all of the outside vendors in-house. I hired, as of today, I've hired 12 drivers. When I first came here, we did have two or three vehicles, four vehicles, maybe sitting on the lot. Everything is in use, has been in use since I started back in January of last year. The transportation department, as I understand it, was started in 2009. We still have six '09 vehicles. A lot of those vehicles are approaching 150,000 to 200,000 miles on them. There was never a rolling stock replacement program. I don't know how it was done in the past, but my understanding was, one would break, they'd park it, two would break, they'd park it. And then maybe when they had two or three, they'd ask for a new one. But all the vehicles are currently in use. We did purchase, in fiscal '22, two new wheelchair vans, which we sorely needed. We had one with a blown engine. We originally had three. We actually had funding. I was gonna replace some of the regular vans last year, but in, in the course of a period of a month, we were down to one wheelchair van. We actually got to the point where, for a period of a week, we couldn't transport some of the wheelchair kits. So, that was a priority. We shifted gears. We bought two brand-new wheelchair vans. The trades on the old wheelchair vans, which again were '09s, they were, they were gonna give us like 500 bucks for them, we kept them as spares. They're out back. We do use them on occasion when we have to pull one in for maintenance, but because that was a specialized vehicle, we decided to keep those two as spares. Going into this fiscal year, 2021, we are trying to replace aggressively some of the '09 vehicles, although they may look good from the wheels up. If you looked at them on a lift, they're starting to rot out underneath. I'm worried about brake lines and things like that. They are inspected not only once a year for the registry, but twice a year by the RMV's bus division or van division to make sure that they're okay. Some of them are a little borderline, so I'm, again, worried about being aggressive, bringing the outside vendors in-house, but then not having the vehicles to do it with. So, we are asking for replacement, four replacement vehicles in this fiscal year to replace some of the '09s. We have six left. I'm asking for four. What hurt me last year, it killed me to do it, but between April 1st and June 15th, we replaced five transmissions in the '09 vehicles to the tune of almost $4,000 apiece. And the last thing you wanna do with a, you know, an 11-year-old vehicle, it's got 180,000 miles on it, you spend $4,000 on a transmission. When you go to trade it, take a half, you know, off your $500 a week later. So, I, I think we do have to be somewhat aggressive. I'm asking for four this fiscal year, three next fiscal year, and I'm trying to project them out. If you look at the sheet that I gave you, if you look at some of the 13s, which are the newer vehicles, they've got 150,000 miles on them. So, I mean, as we bring all this transportation in-house, the miles are going up and we're just gonna have to be a little more planning mindful, if you will, with, with respect to rolling stock. Whether it's police fire, DPW, you, you have to plan for replacement. And again, we're operating 11-year-old vehicles, we're putting kids in them every day. And pretty simple, that's what we're looking for for this fiscal year.
Got it.
Any questions for Mr. Bishop?
Sounds reasonable.
So, Mike, as a representative on capital outlay.
Yes.
Can you guide us through where this discussion should go, next steps for us, next steps for that committee?
Typically, the school committee will vote to endorse the, the capital outlay request that the administration brings to us. And then, that process will go to the capital outlay committee. I believe the next meeting of the capital outlay meeting, committee is, I wanna say February 5th, but, February 5th? Yeah. February 5th. And at that meeting, we'll be looking at projects, looking at how much free cash is available and how much, so, it's the charge to the capital outlay committee to, first of all, recommend whether or not we actually make a capital outlay and then whether, how we fund it, whether it's be, it's funded through free cash or other cash services or long-term borrowing or sometimes shorter-term borrowing. So, that will be going on. But the, for the school committee, we need to decide whether or not we want to put forward all these requests to the capital outlay committee and then ultimately to town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if I made a motion, would it be for each one of these individually or all together?
We could do it either way.
Okay. Well, I don't have a calculator handy, so I can't total everything out, but let me start by making a motion to vote in favor of Paul Riccardi's Priority One replacement costs. Door access system is very important, replacing intercom systems at the elementary schools, design for the replacement high school track, and the old ham you're gonna push to the next year, correct? Okay, so those four items that I think you have a total on there?
Somewhere 600...
Oh, yeah, that's why I can't, I know. I knew I worked out somewhere. Thank you.
620,880.
880, yeah.
So, I motion, we vote to approve that request for capital outlay, 620,880?
For those first three items?
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, 4-0?
I'll keep going with the motions. Second motion, approval of the vehicle replacement plan, very important, we keep our, our students safe with vehicles that, I can't believe we have something that's 173,000 miles, that's way up there. So, what was the total for FY '21, please, Mr. Bishop?
120,000.
120,000. So, I motion that we approve the request for 120,000 for new replacement vehicles.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Keeping with the motions. Uh, let's see, trying to find where...
584,600.
Okay, I will pass this on to somebody else to explain this.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital outlay request for technology in the amount of $584,600.
I will second it.
Further discussion?
I'm just a little concerned it's high. It just, I, I understand that it's everything that we need, I just, just to be a little fiscally mindful, I just wonder that it just feels, it just feels a little high to me. Are there anything that, I know, obviously, they can't because otherwise they wouldn't have gone on your list, is there anything?
We could, you know, we could, like the high school AV technology replacements, that's for every classroom, we could phase it in, like the wireless, you know, half, half the school next year, the other half the year after that, that would cut that down about We could put off the wireless access point refresh phase one, $15,000. I don't think we can cut down much of anything else. The school lab and libraries AV technology replacement, again, we could cut that, cut that down, just, we have to just decide where we're gonna do things.
Can I ask a question? With regard to the laptops and have they looked into leasing? Or has it always been purchasing?
It's always been purchased, but it's definitely something we could look at. Would you move that in the general budget?
Um, 'cause sometimes that is an option, that they'll spread it over three years and by the time the three years is over, usually you need them again. But it gives you three years to pay for them.
We did a lot last year with moving some of the things that previously had been capital requests into the operating budget. The, the biggest was the chrome roll refresh, that we got that into the budget. I think that's something we wanna kinda go slowly on because there really isn't a whole lot of room in the budget to absorb too much more in the way of capital expenses. I know it's that the, on the general government side, they're kind of going about that slowly. Like, I think they're asking for, like, they've put some of their police cruisers in the operating budget, but I don't believe all of them. I think some of them are still capital outlay. So, I think it's, you know, overall, it's sort of a goal of the town to move more of these things into our budget. But, I think it's, we'd have to really look at what would be the budget implications of taking that on to our operating budget.
In my experience, my, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the capital outlay committee, the next meeting, we're all gonna present what we need and then they take a look at what the total number is. And then there, it actually happens there every year, there's a little histrionizing that goes on.
Right.
In, in the meeting. So, I, I would suggest we go in with what we've got and then see what the town side looks like and, and then take it from there. We'll have what we need to, if we have to give something up, but I wouldn't go in and sell ourselves short right away.
And I would say that, I, well, I agree with Maura that this technology number is higher than it's maybe been in recent past. The general facilities number is lower than it's been in the recent past. And so, I think overall, the capital requests for the schools wouldn't be out of sync with what we've done in the last few years, but I'd have to, I, I didn't bring any numbers with me, so I don't know exactly what we did, but it doesn't feel like it's outrageous. But, Mr. Kid, one thing you mentioned is that we could maybe delay the wireless access point refresh, but some of that was counting on the E-Rate program, right? So, we would wanna take advantage of the E-Rate program.
Yeah, I mean, we would just, like I was saying, our E-Rate budget does refresh next year, so it would still be there, we would be able to.
Okay.
We would miss out on this year's budget with that, but, you know, unfortunately, things like projectors and, and some, and phone systems that we sorely need aren't, aren't covered under E-Rate, so can't take advantage of it for those.
And the phone system is really something we wanna do as one big bulk.
That's Priority One.
Right, and it can't be halfway.
That one's not half, yeah.
Yeah.
And we are currently starting to witness problems with our phone system, so, yeah.
Is there further discussion or questions? So, I think there was a motion, there was a second, correct? Okay, so, the motion for the full amount of $584,600 for the technology request to go forth to the capital outlay. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. Thank you very much.
Please, Ellen, go. Dave, you want me to hang on? Yeah.
Okay, so, next on our agenda is an RTI, Response to Intervention, and a Renaissance update with Dr. Wyatt and also Dr. Frazek. And I believe at our spot, we were given, before the meeting started, a number of handouts that we're gonna reference with this update.
All right, good evening, school committee members. I'll kick this off and then Margot will sort of give you some specific examples of the work that's going on around Renaissance. So, just a quick overview on the Renaissance Flow 360. Thanks to the override vote and as part of our district strategic plan to innovate instruction and personalized learning, the administration decided to pilot from October to June of this year in grades three through 10 Renaissance Flow 360 as an adaptive assessment tool that can provide classroom teachers with immediate data to identify where students are struggling with mastering essential skills in math and English language arts. And then to use that data to target personalized support for various groupings of students and to monitor student progress toward mastering. So, that's the, the whole intent behind this initiative and the purpose of the tool itself. I included in the handout titled Report to School Committee there. Our package includes the STAR 360 assessment tool. I mean, this is primarily an assessment tool for reading and math and Flow 360 practice. So, there are two components to it. One is an assessment tool and then the other half of it is a practice tool that helps reinforce the skills that, that kids need to master. And part of the practice tool includes Freckle Math, which is a new product that they procured recently. And it's actually gonna replace their math practice tool. And we have also, part of the package is Accelerated Reader, and soon we will have Freckle ELA, which is sort of a companion piece to Freckle Math. These are all being developed as we speak. And the cost for the pilot this year, just again for your reference, was $49,500 for the software itself and then $11,700 for the professional development, for a total of $61,188, which, the software is about $25 per student, just again as a reference point. And we anticipate, if we go forward with this, the cost next year would be around $56,000 or so. And so, just to reiterate, the grades that we're using, the Flow 360 this year are grades three through five, all three through fifth graders, and all six through eighth graders, and then certain sections of grade nine and 10, English classes and math classes. So, right now, we're involving about 100, I'm sorry, 1,800 students in this pilot. And next year, again, it would expand a little bit to include some of the, you know, grades one and two. We hope if, if this works well for everybody. So, just quickly, a recap on the professional development that we did for that $11,700. It consisted of a three-hour introductory workshop for administrators, which we did on October 3rd. We did two half-day sessions and sort of split the administrators because they had other responsibilities. had other responsibilities in that, uh, professional development day. And so that gave them a good overview of this tool and, and the capacities of the instrument. That was followed by a three-full-day Champions Academy, what they call Champions Academy. On November fifth was day one, December fifth was day two, and January fifteenth was day three, so we just finished our third day of training with our twenty-five identified teachers, champions, and, um, they, they consist of two teachers per elementary school, six middle school teachers, and six teachers from the high school, Jill Milton and Stephanie West are also included in that. So we've got twenty-five champions, the purpose of the champions is really to be there for support of the u- use of the tool, for the classroom, the other classroom teachers to use it and help them interpret the data, read the reports, and just provide sort of expert support in using the tool. So these are folks that, you know, we, we, that stepped up, and we really take our hats off to them for taking on this sort of teacher leadership responsibility. And then, um, uh, lastly, as part of the package, we have six online coaching sessions per school. So as we go forward, and some schools have already used these sessions, they're basically, you know, sixty to ninety-minute hour conversations with a coach, um, a Renaissance coach, um, to answer questions and to help them problem solve anything that comes up at the particular school level, and to plan, you know, going forward. So that's the PD package, if you will, um, and what I'd like to do now is to ask Margot, who's our middle school principal, as you know, to speak, uh, to some of the reports that get generated by Renaissance Flow 360, and kind of how they've been used at the middle school.
Um, so I chose three reports that kinda connect together, that kinda show how we use the data. So the first one is called the STAR Screening Report, um, and it is normally in color, I do not, do not have beautiful color printing for you all tonight, um, but basically, so our students have all taken two assessments that take about twenty, twenty-five minutes of these, and this data is generated immediately. So as soon as the kids are done taking the test, teachers have access to it. So if I'm this teacher, I can take a look, and it gives me a sampling of my students that are above, at or above the benchmark, and those that are, um, kinda right below the benchmark, and those that need intervention. So this is kinda the first kinda overview tool. Um, if you look at the backside of the page, it, it actually names the students, I've redacted all of that, but it tells you which students are in each category and what their scores are, so this is, kinda gives you that overview. On the second one I've given you, it's called an Instructional Planning Class Report. So I've taken the same test, same set of, set of classes, and it's outlining for me as the teacher, what are the areas that students are getting and what are they not getting? So if it looks down, um, it kinda gives me the median, lowest, highest, all kinds of data that math teachers love to look at, I don't know if anybody else does, um, and then it goes down to suggested skills, and it breaks it into different content. So we're looking at a math teacher, same one that we looked at this score for, and he can see that for the class, the geometry, here are some of the geometry standards that our kids at the class need to work on. And then on the next page, it kinda goes into the number system, here's a couple, and there's another system, and you'll see it's just some probabilities, they've, there's quite a little checklist there to go on, I would assume that means we haven't hit that yet, um, which is why it's in there. Um, one thing you'll notice is that on some of them, it says right next to it Focus Skill. So these are the skills that Renaissance has identified as being sort of those, um, those skills that students need in order to really progress to the next level. So if you take a look at all the different standards, and there are many, especially in math, um, they've really kinda collected more data, I'm not even gonna pretend like I know how they did that, cause they just did it, and they've kind of identified, these are the ones that we know build to get onto this one, so just that you know what a focus skill is, so. So this is the first way a teacher can use it, start with this, say, okay, here's how my kids did, here's the areas that the assessment is saying that we need to focus on. So I, as a class, can say, okay, we've got this geometry stuff coming up, or, oh wow, I just taught that, hmm, I didn't seem to get that as a class, maybe I'll kinda work some back in, or something along those lines. And then the third one that I have is a student report. So on that first sheet, I looked and I said, um, oh, actually, no, I'm really sorry, on the Instructional Planning Class Report, I actually chose particular students, I apologize. I actually, and I started to, I should've known. Um, I chose my eight students that were in the middle, that had, they were partially meeting standards, so they weren't my students that were, you know, sort of struggling the most and needed a lot of intervention, they weren't my one meeting ones, and these are what they identified for them, so I apologize for that slight misinformation there. And then, you know, on that first sheet, I noticed that there are two students that, you know, they needed intense intervention, that's what, it would be red on a colored sheet if you had it, and I can do an individual report, I can do an individual report for every single student in my class, so if I'm a teacher and I, I'm looking, I'm saying, okay, you know what, these are students who need intervention, they're in my RTI, my Response to Intervention class, what are the areas that I really wanna focus on with them? And it tells me right in the report, so on the first page, again, this is an individual student, tells me how they did, what their projected score is on the next one, their growth score, which is actually pretty high, nine thirty-one's a pretty good growth score, tells me how much did they improve from the first test to the second test, in terms of how much did they learn. And then again, it really divides it into those skills, the measurement in data, um, number in operations, number operations in fractions, and that helps me as a teacher in the classroom, if I have my own materials that I wanna use, and it also connects to Freckle, cause what I can do, if I have this student logged into Freckle, whichever middle school student is, um, I can take some of my RTI time, and maybe my RTI teachers have, they're between like five and eight students, so they might wanna work in groups of four, and they might say for twenty minutes, I'm gonna put the four of you on here, click, 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 there's Freckle that can work on that particular skill with you, cause it's been identified, and then does that for those four students, it only takes a minute or two, and then as a group, I can be like, okay, I see that all of us need to work on adding fractions, cause everyone on the planet needs to work on adding fractions, um, and then the teacher can sit there and work with that, so. Are there, there are many more reports that Renaissance generates, I mean, there's a report for anything you could possibly want, but I think this kinda shows sort of that, here's that global view, here's that small group focus, and here's how it can tell me about individual students, and I kinda wanted just to give you that sort of overview.
Um, a couple of questions, so I think this is great, and helpful, and so much better than waiting until the MCAS tests and scores are published. Um, so you do the assessment, and then if you determine that a student needs that intervention, then you're using the Freckle Math, or the Freckle Math is something that students are using regularly anyway?
So students, so I can only speak to the middle school level, so all of our students have Freckle accounts, and all of my teachers are using it, so, um, at the middle school level, they use it all the time, they kinda add it in at different times, and we're actually finding that kids enjoy it, like, they, they like it, which is good. Um, we trialed a bunch of these different sort of companies, and that was one of the biggest things we hit, was middle school kids being like, this is babyish, we don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
So we haven't heard that yet, um, so hopefully they won't feel that way. So all of our students use it, and then it's also used for our RTI students, where it can target particular skills. I believe, and this is what Renaissance has told us, is the next step is Freckle is not directly connected to Renaissance yet. That is the next step, so that, I have an individual student report, it is connected to Freckle, so Freckle can adjust itself to what the report indicates the child needs, so that's, that's what the adaptability comes in, and I think because they've purchased it, which, um, I am very happy about, cause their accelerated math, accelerated reading, we're, we're okay, but not fantastic, Freckle is a much better product. Um, I think when they make that connection, that'll be sort of that last, uh, loop that's closed, and I know, um, teachers do like it when students are able to do that, and when teachers then have that choice that I can go in and set a lesson, that says my students need to work on this, but the program's also adaptive, so as a, as a student goes through and either does, and the tests are adaptive as well, they get this question right, get this question right, and it keeps going up and up and up, or I get this one wrong, I get this one wrong, it kinda keeps going down, so it moves with them, which is good, does that kinda make sense?
It, it does, do, do you know if the elementars are all using it in the same way?
Yes, I mean, the, what Margot described at the middle school, similar at the elementary level, they use it not just for intervention, but for daily practice, and it's an engaging tool for kids, and I'll read you a couple of, um, quotes and comments from teachers in a minute, just to close things out.
Yeah.
But they all love it, you know, and, um, it's, and it does have the capacity for kids to practice at home, so it's a, it's a great tool, you know?
Yeah, I'm hoping to look at it to use to sort of incorporate some summer math for kids, so that they have some summer math enrichment opportunities, um, or even like at our own summer programs that we're using, as opposed to teachers having to kinda try and find a whole bunch of stuff, um, have access to this for students as well.
Not to dominate the conversation, but two quick follow-up questions, just cause I know the five elementary schools tend to be different in what they use, and I've asked some of these questions in the past, and I've talked to Joe Kidd, and I've talked to Adam Thompson, but, you know, there's a number of different online math programs out there, some of them are using the Prodigy, Pearson is our curriculum, so there's online math homework through that, some are using extra math, some are using Freckle-
Yep.
And just trying to understand how all of that comes together without feeling overwhelming to a student.
Well, we're hoping that some of that other stuff will fall away-
Okay.
-as this becomes, you know, if this, in fact, the teachers receive this as the-
Okay.
-primary tool, you know, cause, you know, we don't wanna, you know, mix in too much, and Joe is gonna meet with the committee of people to go review the software packages and apps that are used in each of the schools, and sort of make some decisions. So Jill's gonna be involved in that, Stephanie West, myself, and some others, and, um, and try to winnow that list of, uh, you know, the Wild West app use out there, down to a couple of the critical ones that we think everybody should be using for purposes of equity-
Yep.
-and, and consistency, and the ones that tie best to our curriculum and, and program.
Okay, perfect.
So, that's, that's gonna be an ongoing process, but we're, we're gonna start that this year.
Okay, great. The other questions for Dr. Wyatt and Dr. Frazek on the Renaissance?
Sounds very-
And Wyatt said you want to wrap it up?
Yeah, yeah, just let me, cause I, I, a couple of teachers really wanted to sort of express their opinion, so, one teacher said, I love Renaissance, it's giving us data on exactly where our students are at the moment, especially the students that are really far ahead or behind. I also like how we can get year-end projections, that's one, another feature this program has built into it, this is a nationally norm referenced tool, so it's got a huge database behind it. Um, and so it can have, it has certain predictive powers, and we're really looking forward to seeing how closely it matches MCAS results and predicting, it can, it says it can predict, help predict for SAT and PSAT results as well. So we haven't gotten into using it for that purpose yet, but it's, it's built in. Another teacher said that, these are elementary teachers right now, "Data has been helpful in identifying students who need work in specific areas. Freckle has been helpful in engaging students in math fact practice, and it's a plus to have the ability to assign topics in Freckle," which is something I think that we're gonna be building into the, the core program itself, too, is to take the group of kids that you've identified as needing, say, fraction support, and then automatically saying, here's, here's some activities, lessons, practice things you can do relative to mass, math, uh, fractions. Right now, teachers have to kinda set that up on their own, but we're hoping that can be more, more sort of auto-driven, if you will. "Freckle has been amazing for us in math, we have a Freckle Challenge at Prescott, which has been really helpful getting kids to log on at home and spend time on it," so they love it, uh, at Prescott, the Freckle. "Middle school, middle school students seem to enjoy working with Freckle as well." Um, that's, uh, some feedback from the middle school. And lastly, I'd like to read this one, cause this is one of the more thoughtful responses I got from a, um, a teacher, um, at, who is an inclusion specialist. So one snapshot of what we have seen from the data, at least on the math front, is growth from what concepts students knew at the beginning of the year to the new math concepts they have learned, so the growth piece gets reported as well, and there's a growth report, and as Margot mentioned, there are many other reports, that's one of them. "For example, our fifth graders had not worked with deep decimals when the first testing window opened, so the standard showed up in red. Since those topics have been taught and they were retested, the standards for this concept now shows up in green for many of the students," so that's what we wanna see, right? You know, that's just, that's perfect. So it shows that they learned, um, so it shows that they learned and were able to apply this concept independently. It also pinpoints which students are still struggling with the concept to provide intervention support in order to strengthen their understanding. Uh, for our reading portion, based on the original testing and the second round of testing, we've realized that as a fourth grade team, that the students would benefit from more exposure to the standard of providing text evidence to support comprehension answers. So there's a mastery report, a mastery skills report also available in this tool that breaks out exactly what skills kids did not do, you know, did not do well on, and so, you know, you can target those with your, your teaching. As a result of the testing, we're working to create more opportunities for this with guided and independent practice in order to strengthen their overall skills on this standard. So that was, you know, just, I think, one very conscientious teacher that's using this tool to full capacity, uh, right now, but we're still in the, in the learning stages, so I, I wanna be clear about that, we haven't maxed this tool out by any stretch of the imagination, and we still need to do more training and get the, get these champions working with our, our teachers sort of more, uh, one-on-one, you know, almost, but, that's where we're at.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, I, you know, I, I, I wanna thank, um, a lot of people, actually, everybody. This was a big undertaking, um, you know, and it did come after the start of the year, but I have to thank the administrative team for getting behind this, uh, the teachers, their willingness to, to dig into this tool, I think once they did and they got over that, oh my god, what is this piece, they, they've realized what a great tool it is, they kind, they really know where their kids are, have a good, better, much better understanding of that, and like Dr. Wyatt said, um, you know, we're still starting to, to, to scratch the surface. Uh, I need to thank Dr. Frazek and the middle school for all their work last year in piloting all these programs, uh, and bringing forth, uh, an option to, to try district-wide this year, uh, but it really gives us, you know, real-time data with how kids are doing in the middle of the year, we're not waiting till the MCAS results come out next fall, and we're really able to personalize instruction, make sure kids are making progress, and know where our kids are, and use that to inform our instruction. I have to compliment the staff for really digging into that, you know, our champions stepping forward, uh, to be leaders in the buildings, um, you know, it, again, it says tremendous amounts about the people we have working, uh, in the Northwood Public Schools, and I couldn't be happier, so, there, there's still work to do, but, again, you know, my, my belief that if we give these, these quality teachers the tools that they need to do a good job, that, that's what's gonna happen, so I just wanna say thank you to all of them. Oh, and to Dr. Wyatt too, for, he, he had, uh, he had a tremendous amount of work of trying to organize him and fitting all this in, so, I, I think I might've caused him a few more gray hairs-
Yeah.
But, but, right, but he does, but, right, it was brown, he, he, right, he had perfectly brown hair until he started working for me, but, um, you know, his, his effort, uh, his efforts there are also appreciated, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, ma'am. Um, so you said that the cost for next year would be fifty-six thousand dollars, is that for the same group of students, all third through eighth graders, and then some sections of ninth and tenth?
Yeah, I, I'll need to recheck our, our quote, but I think that included, um, yeah, that included just the three through, no, it included, um, grades one through five, I believe, yeah, I'll have to double-check that, though, but, so the idea is-
You added one and two to that.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna expand access to that.
So include, so, overall, one through ten?
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay. Um, and we will be seeing that in the budget request that's coming-
Yes, yeah.
-next meeting?
Okay, great, thank you. So we're just gonna change the order of the agenda slightly, uh, so it'll leave Dr. Frazek, uh, cause we're gonna talk about the field trip request.
No.
Uh, so the last meeting, the field trip request came forth, um, to go to DC, but we had some questions, we wanted some additional information in the packet, if you look at your packet towards the back, um, I believe everything is there now, I think we were missing the itinerary last time, um, but Dr. Frazek, do you wanna just quickly take us through what you added, and then if the committee has any questions, we can ask you.
So essentially, uh, yeah, I, I don't, the sheet that we sent home with students that has the itinerary and all the information about the trip, I, I don't know how it didn't make it into the original packet, but it didn't, so I put that in, but then I also added the PowerPoint that we go over with parents at the very beginning of the tri- of, of, not the beginning of the trip, but in September, when we start talking about the trip. Um, so it really has everything that we do, everywhere that we go, sort of all the basics are covered. Um, this is our fourth year, and fourth year doing the trip, fourth year doing it with EF. Um, every year we take an average of about a hundred and fifty students, um, we offer fifty percent scholarships to students with financial need. Last year we did twenty-two scholarships altogether, which was phenomenal, this year I got about fourteen. Students do ten hours of community service in exchange for their scholarship, which is also pretty awesome, cause they do it in a lot of different places, it's really neat to talk to kids about that. Any questions you might have for me?
Yeah, I'll just ask a question on behalf of Joan, cause she was raising my question last year, is, uh, the seventy to eighty kids who opt not to it- The 70 to 80 kids who opt not to attend, do you have a sense of, you know, kind of what the issues are with that? And I can imagine many possibilities, but I'm curious what, what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I think some, some it's certainly financial, because I don't have the capacity to offer, it's almost $800 for the trip, so I don't have the capacity to offer 100% scholarships. So probably some of that. I would say of the 70 or 80 that don't go, I would say there's easily 30 or 40 that aren't comfortable, either they or their families are not comfortable with them traveling. Because we've had that, we do have, always have some that they have different commitments, so for whatever reason, they have appointments or things along those lines. I would say those are probably the main reasons that students don't go.
And I think we're echoing Joan, but she wanted to make sure everything was open and inclusive, so that nobody felt, I don't know, socially uncomfortable.
Absolutely. Every single student is invited, from every student in my PACS program, to which we, I personally reach out to those parents, along with my PACS teacher, to make sure that those students know that they're welcome to come. We've, I've taken students with physical disabilities. I took a student with a visual impairment last year. She did great. She did amazing. Students, yeah, every singles, every single eighth grade student has the option to go. I have a student who's currently out of district who I made it, but she was with us in sixth grade, and I said, "If you want her to come, then she comes." Because that's the case in half district students, so we really try and make it clear. I say it to them at the beginning of the year, when we talk to eighth graders about it, when I talk to parents about it, is that my dream would be to have 243 eighth grade students travel down with me to Washington, DC. Because really, with a couple of extra buses, one way or the other. No, I would love to have every single one of them go.
Any further questions for Dr. Frazek? Is there a motion to approve this field trip tonight?
Let's approve.
Seconded by you, Ma? Okay. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, Margo, it's somebody that went on an eighth grade field trip. It was life-changing, so it's a great trip for all the kids.
It is, and, and I've seen it, it really impacted lives in their experience. For a lot of our kids, it's their first time outside of the state of Massachusetts, so.
I got, I got on the bus an introvert and left as an extrovert, so.
Happens to a few of the kids on my bus, yes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Frazek. So we are moving into the superintendent's report and lead agenda, but we are going to go a little out of order, because Mr. Ricardi has stayed. Thank you. In case we have any questions about the Safer Schools and the tech grant, which we do have some information in front of us in our packet.
Yeah, there's a memo in your packet from, from Mr. Ricardi. If you remember, we did get the Safer Schools and Communities Grant for $28,000. With that, we installed three video cameras at the Coakley, five video cameras at the high school, and also added one video camera to each elementary school. So basically, it also, also added 184 camera license upgrades, and that work was completed by the first of December, so.
Sorry, what is a camera license upgrade?
It's the license to operate the camera that you technically pay every year. It's just how they make money in the, in the camera.
Right, it's a software license.
Software license, okay, so it's not like, I figured we owned the cameras.
Right.
So we were able to upgrade all of the licenses for all of our cameras.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, Ma'am.
Who provided this grant? I've forgotten.
This was from the, from the state. It was a supplemental grant that was, it came out April, it had to be in by April 1st last year.
Yeah, and we got it like the end of March, last week of March, from the police department.
Right.
Who didn't have a chance to do it.
Right. And in the, in the, the forum that the governor and lieutenant governor had in the fall that I went to, they were talking, were hoping to do this, make this a yearly thing, where they're trying to provide money to communities to keep upgrading the security infrastructure in the schools. So we're anxiously waiting for the next one.
And the best part is, we've already received the money, the paperwork had to be in by the end of December, and Rhonda in the business office told me that the state already paid the $28,000.
Oh, wow.
That's really good, so we can pay the vendor now.
Wow, nice. Always good to do that.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricardi. Also at your place, and this just came in this afternoon, the governor's budget was released today, and the Mass Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services has already published an estimate of what the chair sheet would be based on the governor's budget. This is Norwood, right here, and you can see the chapter 70 would increase about $1,500,000, and possibly charter tuitions about $60,000, $60,000 for a proposed possible increase, and I say possible, because this is only the first of three budgets we will see before a final budget is decided on, but we're looking at possibly going up about $1.6 million based on the governor's numbers, so that is good. You can see the positive numbers for the entire town, and again, this is Norwood, just for your information. Also at your place is a copy of the timeline for the Oldham Principal Search. We have assembled our search committee. The application's closed this past Friday. We're going to be compiling those applications. There's going to be an initial organizational meeting on the 3rd of February with the committee, and then they will be reviewing applications the 4th through the 7th of February. And then we will be doing interviews the 24th through the 27th. And then we're going to come together as a committee on March 3rd, and I will be there to listen about what their, thought about their finalists and who their finalists will be. Superintendent interviews and parent and community forums will happen sometime between the 4th and the 11th of March. Those community forums and forums with the staff, that's usually a conversation with the finalists, because, you know, they have responsibilities in whatever district they might be coming from and working around those, but obviously, we try to, try to do them in, in, in one or two days, and then we would have the selection and announcement no later than the end of March, March 25th. So that is also for your information. Also at your place is updated enrollment report. You have the January 2nd enrollment report, and you have, and I think I sent this out last week, where you have updated numbers from the Oldham. We are looking at those fourth grade classrooms and what could possibly be done as some sort of relief. I expect hopefully in the next week or so, I'll have a recommendation for the committee, but I wanted you to be able to look at the Oldham numbers compared to the rest of the district in that. On the, the sheet that just has the, the single sheet that just has the Oldham numbers, the parentheses are the students that would be leaving for, I believe that's the PACS numbers. The blue numbers are EL in there, so you can kind of see, and those are students who may very well not be in the classroom full-time, so. Just for your information, but more, I-
Dr. Thompson, just a question.
Yeah.
Are we looking at an aide to help between those two, those two rooms?
We're, we're, we're looking at a couple options. One might be an aide, one might be a co-teacher.
Okay.
There's pros and cons to both, and I would need to sit down with Mrs. Sharon to see what is feasible in our budget. We are going to have some openings for, for elementary teachers. Might be a good opportunity to bring someone on. Teacher has slightly more skills theoretically than an aide does, but, so.
In the budget, I'm assuming that they'll be looking at a grade five for the Oldham, since all those students will be going up again to just two classrooms?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay.
We, we're, we're still in the process of meeting with all of the staffing requests now that they're all finalized. They were originally made, but we need to sit down with special ed and look at what those are and prioritize all of those, but yes.
And you expect by the next meeting to have-
Yeah.
-more, to have had more time to figure out what we're going to do immediately for that grade four classroom?
Yeah. Well, and, you know, and part of it is, you know, we had two, two children move in before the holidays and two moved in after the holidays, and, you know, what, what are the needs in that classroom and how, how often they're actually there and where? If we did bring somebody, how would we divvy that up? So those are all questions that I've asked. It's going to take a little bit to get a thoughtful answer on that.
But you are working with Mr. Griffin and the teachers?
Yes.
And by the next meeting-
I'm working with Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Griffin is working with the teachers, yes.
Okay. And do you know, I know your, the budget is coming at the next meeting, and we'll have tons of information then, but at that next meeting, will we also have more information on projected enrollment, like with the number of K kids moving to first grade in every school? So we can kind of see the moving pieces and where teachers might be needed across the district? Because I agree with Ma, that definitely looks like we're going to be talking about fifth grade teacher at the Oldham.
Right.
But I know some of the other schools also have some increasing need. So, but will that all be presented to us next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Were there other questions tonight about the enrollment or the Oldham situation?
Two more things. A reminder that tomorrow I'll be at the superintendent's conference. That is the one where the commissioner will be talking specifically about the Student Opportunities Act and the plan that we are supposed to come up with by April 1st about how we're going to use our increase in funding from the new spending act towards closing achievement gaps. And then a quick reminder that this Saturday is the Character Breakfast at Norwood High School, 9:00 AM to 10:30. I believe we're going to have Disney princesses, Star Wars characters, and superheroes. Yes, all right, and that is a $5 donation as well.
So being one of the Star Wars characters, I can add that I think we have a massive amount of people signed up to do Star Wars characters, probably about 18 or so, so looking forward to that. And everybody, my wife and I will be there, so hope, hope to see you there as well.
That's great. Do you have any other last minute update?
Nope, I think that, that covers it, thank you.
I had one that I wanted to bring to the committee. This just all unfolded last night after the Board of Selectmen meeting. I don't know if others are aware, but the Board of Selectmen last night, they did have the opportunity to discuss changing the name of Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Mr. Plasko made a motion to bring it forth to the citizens of Norwood, but nobody seconded that motion. So I personally am going to be sending them a letter, but as I wrote a letter, I didn't know if it was something that as a full school committee we wanted to send. You can tell me no, and that's okay, and I'll edit this, and it'll just be from me as a person. But there is a letter that I emailed this morning, and it is in front of you. I won't read it on camera unless we decide it is something that as a school committee we want to send. Yeah, Ma?
I appreciate your personal opinion, and I certainly have my personal opinion on this, and I encourage everyone who has any concerns about anything that any elected board does to reach out to those board members directly, you know, I'm not talking about just the Board of Selectmen, I'm absolutely talking about us as school committee members as well.
Sure.
But the question is, you know, is this an action that the school committee should take? And I look at this, and I think this doesn't directly impact our, our, you know, budget, our policy, our review of the superintendent. And so I think that my vote, my thoughts on this shouldn't carry any more weight than, on like, general town thing shouldn't carry any more weight than any voter in town.
Okay.
And so I would be opposed to the school committee taking a formal position on this.
I echo Myev, that personally, I am, I am, well, I won't comment too much personally, but I have an agreement with you. But for us to sign as a school committee is a little challenging. If you decide to send this letter as an individual, I will gladly co-sign it with you.
Okay. Totally fine. Just wanted to bring, bring forth the discussion. So I will send it as myself. It will not be a Norwood School Committee letterhead. I will not say as members of the school committee. I will say specifically as me, but just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
May as well, if you let me.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving along to budget. Myev sent out earlier, and we have in front of us a copy of the budget subcommittee survey that we started to discuss.
Yes, so you'll see that you have this copy of the survey in front of you. It's double-sided, but just one sheet, a total of 15 questions, and some of them are really kind of follow-up questions. The plan would be to make this an online survey. I have not yet made the Google form, because I wanted everybody to agree on what the questions would be before I make the form. But we also wanted to have a paper version for those people who might not be comfortable with an online option, and I've arranged with at least the senior center and the library, they're both willing to have copies available, and I've also reached out to Town Hall, I haven't heard back from them. So I wanted to see what you guys thought, if you had any suggestions. And then actually, after I sent this out, I did get one piece of feedback. So on the first page, number three, there was a suggestion that I should add an other option, and that where I have other option, I should make, make a line so that people could write in if they want what that other is.
Okay.
So I thought that was a good idea, but other than that, I'm open to any suggestions.
I looked at this and didn't have any, and now looking at it again, it kind of sparked me a little bit, and-
Great.
I want to make sure I'm not missing it somewhere. But on question four, it says, "Have you ever had questions about the school committee allocates resources or how much it costs to educate Norwood students? Yes or no?" I wonder if it's possible to add one more question where it's, "If yes, were you able to find those answers to those questions?" And I don't think it needs to be like, "Where did you find it?", but it's like, I think it'd be helpful to know if you had questions, were you able to find them?
Okay.
And, well, when you're-
Yeah, Dave.
Well, she's still taking notes, so.
No, I got it, I'm listening.
Oh, cool, cool. So I was going to say, not to make this all-inclusive everything, but, you know, using it as an informational tool, sort of like, "Did you know that we have public forum at school committee meetings?" So, so many times we have nobody here to say anything, when I'm sure there are things people would love to ask us or comment. So I would just kind of, as an informational survey of, as we're saying, like, "Things are here that you can see. Maybe it's just FYI, did you know that public forum is a thing here?" Doesn't have to be, but it would be cool.
I know, I think it's in, it's true that we can absolutely use surveys to kind of get some information out there. So we had talked about, you know, did we want to, you know, we, we did try and put in a few of the links about the, like, where you could find some budget information, where you could buy and find strategic plan information, and then I'm willing to do whatever else we want to do. Although, the other thing that I was trying to keep in mind is that I didn't want to, I started out with a smaller font, and then I realized that was going to be kind of difficult for a paper survey. And then I really would love to keep it to one sheet.
Back in front, yeah.
So I don't want to get too crazy, but I'm not opposed to adding something.
So I thought this was absolutely awesome. It's great. Devil's advocate, ever think somebody might fill in multiple of these just to have their opinion weigh more?
Sure. But if somebody really cares that much to do that, then they're the ones we want to reach.
Okay.
Like, that's, like, we're not using this to decide how to allocate resources. It would be different, like, if we sent out, you know, something to all the elementary schools and said, you know, "How much do you think your kid needs this?", like-
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but this is like, if you're trying to get information, what are the effective ways to reach you? And if somebody cares enough about getting information to try to, you know, like, skew the results, then let's give them the information they want, however they want it, right?
Good point. This is very, just to figure out how to best communicate with people.
Right.
Right.
Right. You know, we've, we've made a lot of efforts, but are we actually reaching our target?
Right.
And we don't know. So do we want to add a question about public forum? Do we want to add a question about, I don't know, like, our email addresses? Like, you know, is there something we want to add?
Yeah, like, how could they get in touch with us if they want it to? That type of question, which could be public forum, calling, emailing, Dr. Thompson.
Or, or maybe, maybe instead of, you know, like, just a small informational box saying, "Thank you for filling in the survey, and if you have additional questions, we have public forum, we have emails, we have something like that." Just as a, on the sheet, not like a question, not a loaded question, but just like, you know, if you have more questions, FYI, here we are.
Yeah, I just want to be careful with the wording, because like, a public forum, if they come, like, we're just not allowed to engage, and it's not a question and answer. like we're just not allowed to engage, and it's not a question and answer session.
Right.
Obviously, they can come and share feedback and, and that's very valid, but just be careful with the questioning of that, or the writing of that.
But I can certainly share email addresses.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Let's just put a link to the contact page.
Right. Okay. Other than that, are there any other suggestions? And, or are you guys okay with us going ahead and sending this out?
Myev, I have a question on number six. How, have you found this source to be reliable? What, will, will all the respondents know exactly what that means? I mean, reliable in what way? I mean, is it, so let's say they check newsletters from school and say it's not reliable. What does that mean? How will we interpret that?
Yeah, maybe reliable isn't maybe the right word, maybe it's helpful? That's a good question.
Did you get the source to answer your question?
Yeah. I think, that question was actually recommended to me by somebody. And, you know, it's supposed to be a follow-up for, for number five, which is, if you were looking for information about the budget, where would you look first? And, you know, we suggest the, the, the school website, the town website, North Community Media, local newspaper, social media, community meetings, newsletters from schools and other. And so...
Not sure you're gonna, you know, there are too many follow-up questions that need to be asked about that.
That's a good point, right. I mean, certainly we think...
Is it reliable because it's not consistently delivered? Or is it not reliable because I don't trust it? Or it's, you know, the information's changing?
What about helpful?
Right, well, I think, you know, Maura was also already suggesting that we say, like, if yes, were you able to find the answer? And then, I think that's kind of, in some ways getting at the same thing, but in a different way, that might be more useful to us.
I think Dr. Wyeth's right, you'd get that answer back and I don't think you'd know what to make of it.
Right. I mean, you know, if they, if they're telling us that the, you know, the town meeting materials are not reliable, then I don't know what we do with that, because that's the official answer. If they're telling me that their Facebook feed isn't reliable, then...
Like, obviously.
Yeah. So, so I think maybe, maybe you're right, that maybe we, instead of, maybe we should just scratch question six, because I'm not really sure what we're gonna get from that. But, instead of that, put in Maura's suggested question right after number four.
Right.
Were you able to find the answer, yes or no?
Yeah.
And then where are you looking for information?
I think that's good.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright?
Yeah, definitely group thing helps.
Yeah, thank you Myev for taking the lead on all this. Was there anything else, anything else about the Budget Subcommittee you might have that you wanted to share out at this time?
I don't think so, we gave you guys the latest minutes, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, Miss Sheridan, we have a couple of budget transfers?
Yep, there's three budget transfer requests. The first one is from the Prescott School. They're requesting that the amount of $1,0786.44 be transferred from their textbook account to their Prescott Repair and Replace account for the purchase, purpose of purchasing a new laminator for the school. The laminator that the school currently uses is 10 years old and unfortunately has stopped working. They clearly have the money in the textbooks account, the balance is $22,993. So that's the first request. Do you want me to read out all three and then...
Are there, do you want to ask questions, any questions on that person? No, okay, why don't you keep going?
The second one is the Willett Early Childhood Center. They want to transfer $10,000 from their textbooks account to their instructional supply account. And they clearly also have the money, the textbook account has $22,127 in it. And they would like to, the reason for the transfer, additional materials are needed for kindergarten screening, given a new schedule format they're using. We will have more teachers screening at one time, at one time than in the past, which means we need additional testing materials. So that's at the Willett. And then the third one is the Cleveland School. The Cleveland School would like to transfer $15,000 from their textbooks account to their instructional supplies account. They have in the textbooks account, $16,995 available balance. And their request is, in accordance with the school improvement plan and the strategic plan, our fifth grade teachers have requested a student-centered learning model, which involves purchasing all new desks and storage carts. The advantages of these new triangular desks are many. They provide teachers a better view of all students, a better view of the smart board, and a knees with which to regroup students from cooperative and collaborative learning opportunities. She goes on to indicate flexible, flexible seating allows for an increase in student engagement, creates personalized learning benefits. And we will, we believe this a good starting point in achieving our school-wide goal of creating a 21st century learning environment focused on the four Cs. So those are the three budget transfer requests.
Most to approve.
Is there a second? A second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Anna, thank you. And Dr. Thompson and Miss Sheridan, if you could just let Ms. Cola know that I thought it was really great and helpful to include how, you know, the budget is being used to support our school improvement plans and strategic, strategic goals.
Did have a nice...
Yeah. Okay. Almost done, guys. No, it looks like we're not, but these are quick topics, hopefully we move through the rest pretty quickly. But next up is just a quick update on the long-term agenda. Make sure you're looking at the one that says 122 that was on your desk, cause I updated this very late last night. So as I shared with you in the last meeting, I was gonna go to the administrators' meeting last week and talk with them about the long-term agenda. Just make sure that everyone's timelines aligned and we're working towards the same goals. So just a couple of changes that I wanted to share with you. So next meeting, our official budget process does begin. And it was mostly gonna be a Sheridan show, with Dr. Thompson, of course, because we're getting a number of reports and, and budget updates. But we are also, I believe, Dr. Wyeth, you said the school calendar will be ready for our review?
Yeah.
On February 5th? Okay, great. And we are gonna have Ms. Amino at the next meeting as well for quite an update and discussion on special education. So, it will probably be a lengthier meeting on the 5th, so be prepared for that. Something, yeah.
Question on that one?
Sure.
I thought that we were gonna move the revolving to the February 26th.
Yes.
Did you want to do the activity, the student activities and the revolving fund to the 26th?
That, the grants, the revolving...
All three of those.
Basically just, they're all the revolving accounts.
Okay.
To the 26th, only because of the budget is due on that day.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I know we moved the extended day stuff, sorry that, I missed that, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, so I will move that to the 26th.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, perfect, thank you, Karen. So we have the ELA Curriculum Committee coming forth with recommendation on the 26th. That still works, Dr. Wyeth, correct? Okay. So last week, or right after we last met as a committee, Dr. Thompson and I were notified that Student Government Day is changing. It's typically the first Wednesday of April, but it has moved to February 26th. Now, it's on our agenda in red and highlight it, because I've been going back and forth with Dr. Thompson on if we keep it this day, if we try to move it. And I didn't want to make that decision without all of your feedback. It is a budget-heavy meeting that night as well, we do have the ELA curriculum. We do also have the mid-year check-in on Dr. Thompson. So there is a piece of me that feels like that is a really heavy meeting. And as wonderful Student Government Day is, that is an additional, you know, 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. We will also most likely have, you know, one if not two executive sessions that night as well.
Can I make?
Yeah, please, Dr. Thompson.
So part of, part of moving it up was so the seniors, because currently the way we run it, the seniors are not able to be involved with it, was so they could be involved in Student Government Day. And in talking to General Linsky, she suggested that we could, the students could still participate in Student Government Day, but then maybe come to a meeting at a different day to do that aspect of it. I will also remind the committee that we're kind of the only group that actually has the students do a live meeting, because the other boards don't meet on Wednesday. So, possibly do a mock meeting in the afternoon or something on that line too, so. But it was suggested that maybe, you know, have, have the students participate in the Student Government Day with everybody else, but then do a meeting a different night.
Yeah, David Johnson.
I would be in favor of that, I mean, I don't want to scare them away from being government.
So, just my two cents, I, and I mean, we talked about this last time, I think February 5th is overbooked, and I think we, there's a likelihood we may not get to everything. And that things may have to be pushed to the 26th. So I think adding something there is just not feasible. And I, I would say, and I know we talked about this, and I know that a lot of that stuff has to be there on the 5th, but if there's anything that can be moved, I just, I don't see us reasonably getting through it, through it all.
Yeah, I mean, I did, I did move some things already.
Yeah, I know.
And some things from tonight got bumped and it's just...
Right.
A domino effect, so I, I do hear you. I, I put it there because we were notified, and again, I didn't want to make this decision on my own. You'll notice that I did move the meeting that was supposed to be at the Cleveland on March 11th to April 29th, so that we could have, you know, all of our February/March meetings in this space and we can really, you know, focus and have all our technology and our information on the budget. So my gut reaction was to, you know, not have the students come on February 26th. But then, when do we want them? You know, it would have been with the old schedule on April 8th, which can sometimes also be an awkward time to have Student Government Day, cause that's right after the election and, you know, potential turnover on the board. But then, as Dr. Thompson also raised, we are the only board that has them come to a, a live meeting. So I wasn't sure what we wanted to do.
All in favor of keeping the tradition, but I just don't think it's feasible on, on the 26th.
Does anybody have a suggestion for when you would want them to come, Myev?
Well, I guess, one question is, you know, is there an option that they aren't here at our 7:15 meeting, but they come earlier and those of us that can come and work with them earlier, kind of come allow them to, to do part of the meeting instead of, you know... I know in the past, we have sometimes had them come before the meeting and had pizza with them and kind of talked with them about whatever they were gonna be working on for the...
Right.
They were gonna be debating for the thing. And, I mean, I do think it's valuable for us to get to hear what they have to say, but I also think that it's difficult to, to have them, you know, participating in our, our meeting, which is already crammed full.
Yeah. So consensus is not February 26th, which I'm in support of. I mean, there's the whole daytime thing that they do and I don't even know if I'm able to participate on 26th during the day with, with my work schedule. I know that they'll be with you part of the day, I know that they're with, you know, the other students in Town Hall.
Are you keeping the, the van drive benefits for that day?
That's what we had talked about.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine with me, but I just didn't know if that's what you...
Yeah. Do you want to talk more with Ms. Linsky and see if she has some ideas? Do they, do they know who the students are already?
I don't think they've held the election yet, no. I mean, I, I, I mean, obviously the, the simple answer would be to have them come the 11th, but that's the Cleveland, not here.
Well, no, I'm moving the Cleveland to April 29th, I think you're looking at the wrong.
I am, I can't find, I can't find the right one.
I just updated it last night.
There you go.
But, yeah, I moved the Cleveland to the 29th, which Ms. Cola said was fine with her.
So...
So, we need to repost that?
Yes, yes, sorry, I didn't email you that yet.
So what if we take them, have them over on the 25th, okay? But we just sort of rearrange the schedule, so we'll do some fun stuff like winter athletics, finance recognition?
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely...
Couple, couple things, then like, you know, just so they're here part of the time?
Well, usually they're in the beginning. They don't stay for the whole meeting. The 25th, we can definitely move the winter athletics, finance, that doesn't have to happen that night. But we do have the budget hearing, which, not quite sure yet what that will look like. And we do have the school start time task force recommendations, which will want some decent amount of time. Just focus on that.
Well, I wasn't saying that we'd take stuff off, I was saying that like, you know, we, we have them attend part of it as we do what we're doing, but don't keep them the entire time.
No, well, that's what we, that's normally what we do.
Right.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, what they've done is they've come with their, and developed a short agenda and they have had a short, one or two item...
Right.
Meeting and, and vote on things, so.
So 10, 15 minutes additional?
It's usually a half hour, right? Cause we take those and it takes a while. Alright, so we'll say it's not February 26th. Please talk to Jennifer Linsky more, you and I can talk more.
Yep.
I think keeping it on the 8th probably makes enough sense, but I take your point.
On April 8th.
Yeah, it's one of the lighter meetings.
Yeah, yeah, cause we're, we're done with the budget at that, at that point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or the 29th, that's a pretty light one.
Yeah, one of those two. Okay.
Although I think they like to come to the school committee room.
Right.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so they want another big update that I just wanted to inform you on. So remember in August, the elementary principals came forth with the handbook and we started to talk through, you know, the, the larger project of, you know, discipline and PBIS and social-emotional learning, and how could we embed that into the handbook and our policies and our procedure, which is obviously not an easy thing to do. At that August meeting, we had said that they would begin that work in October. But when I met with them and Dr. Thompson on Wednesday, for all the reasons that, you know, for everything else that's been going on, that work has not yet started. So I just wanted the committee to know that it's not gonna be coming forth to us this school year. They felt like they could start some of that work over the summer, provide an update in the fall, and then possibly the changes to the handbook would be next spring, spring 2021 at earliest. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew of that shift from the last time we had talked about it. But as always, we can talk about agenda offline, so if you review this document and you ever have any questions or feedback, just let me know. So, very quickly, I wanted to provide you a quick update on the school start time task force. There's a rumor out there that this initiative has been abandoned, and that is not true. The task force is still very much alive and working hard on this. The task force will be coming to us on March 25th with the recommendations. If we're ready, ready to vote that night, great, but the expectation is not that we're ready to vote. The task force will come back on April 29th and then in between can, you know, do additional work or forums or whatever it is as a committee we feel is needed. But I just want to let, want to let you know that it is still going on, it has not been abandoned. We have now done the surveys, not only with the parents and the students, but we also had staff surveys that went out. All the survey results are still being compiled, so that we can present it and also have a website page with all this information. But we did have 94 high school staff take the survey, which is 63% of the high school staff. Bless you. We had 75 middle school staff take it, which is 74% of the middle school staff. And then we had 144 elementary staff take it, which was just under 50%. So we did have a good response and there is a lot of data that we are working through. And then just the last thing I want all of you to know, when this conversation started back in, when did we start, Mark? 2017? It was soon after we were on this board. You know, we were initially looking at this past fall, then we were talking about fall 2020, where we are now. You know, the task force, when we come with the recommendation, it's for fall 2021. So I didn't want you or anybody in the community to be panicking that we're looking for any significant possible change this coming school year, it would be the next one.
Right.
So, just wanted to kind of, make sure everybody knew that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we already did a field trip, so just to touch base on the townwide debt management policy, which I had forwarded you, an email from Ann Haley this morning. The write-up should be in front of us. So it's this brief page, does everybody have that? So, last meeting, we approved all the townwide financial policies except the one on the debt management. As you remember, probably remember, you gave me the approval to go meet with Ann Haley and Paul Bishop, which three of us met yesterday. The sentence that Ann Haley was questioning was on page 7, third paragraph, where it said, "The town will have a maximum debt limit equal to 5% of the non-utility operating budget." where it said, "The town will have a maximum debt limit equal to 5% of the nonutility operating budget." And last meeting, she gave us a spreadsheet to show how that could possibly put us in debt by about a million more than what she thought we had intended when we all met together in April as the three boards. So, the language that Paul Bishop, Ann Haley, and I had talked about yesterday, uh, would be, "The town will maintain annual general fund debt service levels at a target range of approximately 5% of current nonutility revenues, except for debt-excluded tax revenues. Debt services levels shall include annual debt service requirements and short-term financing costs of capital expenditures." So, that is the language that the three of us are proposing goes into that policy.
Motion to approve. Second?
Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Uh, so, Dr. Thompson and Sheridan and I were at the FINCOM meeting last week, and while we were there, uh, Travis Farley was there presenting to FINCOM on a pool feasibility committee. And while he was there, um, getting a select, uh, representative from FINCOM, the conversation came up of you should have a representative from the school committee. I did not initiate that conversation. You should know that. But the, their argument for possibly having one of us on this committee is because our extended day program does use, uh, Father Max Pool in the summer. So, did we want a voice at the table to represent our extended day program? Um, so, Mr. Farley submitted a letter, which you should have in front of you. Um, I'll just read it so everybody knows. "Dear committee members, the NOR Recreation Department will be looking to form a general pool feasibility committee in the near future. This committee will be made up of a handful of town employees from various departments, and representatives from the Board of Selectmen, Capitol Outlay, School Committee, and the Finance Commission. The main goal of this committee will be to look at the pros and cons of both pool, both pools, look at different options for improvements, solicit public input on a path forward, and ultimately come up with recommendations moving forward at each pool. This will be a very important decision for the town of Norwood, and one that our department will not take lightly. I believe forming a committee will allow us to explore all options and make the right choice for the town. If you would like to nominate one member from your committee to represent you, um, please have him or her contact Travis Farley." So, he is planning to convene this committee soon, um, by the beginning of February. Um, he said it would be a once-a-month commitment, I believe, in the evening. I don't know the exact time. I believe he's gonna pull people, um, once he has his committee formed. And I forgot who from FINCOM is on it. Is it Bob? Is Bob from Capitol Outlay? Bob Donnelly?
I don't think so.
I'm not sure. I thought it, I thought it was Bob.
No, Bobby is. Bobby's at Capitol.
Yeah, I thi- I think it was Bob who said that he was gonna do it from Finance Commission. I don't know if the Board of Selectmen nominated somebody yet. Um, does anybody have interest in serving on this committee?
Interest, but no time, unfortunately.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, all right. I, I'll, I'll tell them I'll go to the first meeting, kind of get a sense of what it's gonna look like. I might not be able to do it long-term, but I can at least go and, and get this conversation started and, and see what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. All right, almost at the end of this piece. So, Dr. Thompson, um, acceptance of donations?
Yes, uh, we have a, uh, two donations. One is, uh, from, um, the Norfolk District Attorney, Michael Morrissey. Uh, they have donated two doses of, um, of Narcan spray for each school. And also a single dose for the athletic department. And then, the other donation, uh, is from, um, Bay State Textiles, collections from our various boxes in front of the school for a total of $414.
Motion to approve. Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. You name the next. Thank you. So, school committee agenda. Uh, Maura, would you like to start by listing? Okay.
I just wanted to bring up a brief thing that, um, because I had raised the question at our last meeting of whether or not it was legal that our drivers did not have more sick time than they had. And I did look it up, and it turns out that there's a municipal employee exemption. So, we are not out of compliance with the state law. However, I also looked it up and realized that, um, three years ago, the school committee had voted to, um, extend some, at that time, to extend some sick time to all of the drivers in response to the fact that the private vendors who hire drivers are not exempt from that law and were forced to offer sick time. So, we, um, do offer some sick time, and, um, I believe the Transportation Department is making sure that we're doing that in accordance with the, the vote that was taken several years ago.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, no prepared remarks, but as my mother reminded me, uh, this weekend is Lunar New Year, so those in the community celebrating it, uh, myself included, uh, Happy New Year. That's all I have to say.
Wonderful. Uh, and I just want to make brief comments. On Monday, I was presenter for the second year row, um, at the Tony Awards, which is the 10 Outstanding NORD Youth, uh, that is organized by the Orient Lodge of, um, the Masons of Orient Lodge in Norwood. And, um, it was an amazing event. It was recorded. It is on NCM, should you choose to watch it. Um, but there were 24 students nominated, um, and then 10, of course, win the award, the 10 Outstanding NORD Youth. And, um, I was there last year as well. And last year, when I was there and listening to the accomplishments and the dedication of our students, I was really worried, because last year at this time, you know, we were looking at the possibility of no override and taking away all these activities that the students, uh, were receiving awards for. But this year, you know, listening, I didn't have that fear. I know we're in a good place. But it did kind of cement how important it is as a school system and as a community that we offer our youth these amazing opportunities to participate and grow and volunteer and make a difference. And, um, the students that were recognized, they're, they're so heavily involved, and they're, they're such an impressive group. And, you know, from the Model UN to, um, the Global Citizens Program, to things that they're doing in their faith-based organizations, and food drives, and toy drives, and just everything. Um, it was just really, really impressive. So, even if you don't watch the whole thing, watch a little bit of it. And I think that, you know, as a school system and as a town, we should feel really good about the opportunities we give our youth and really proud of what they do with those opportunities. And then, just a thank you to the Masons for organizing it again. Um, it was actually the 50th Annual, um, Tony Award. So, it's been something in the community that's been around for quite a while. Yeah. Yeah, no, it was, it was amusing. So, two hours, just under. Getting better at keeping my word, too, when I tell you how long meetings are, are gonna be. Uh, but we do need to go back into executive sessions to continue our discussion around various contract negotiations. Um, we will convene just for the purpose of adjournment. Um, is there a motion?
So, moved?
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Oh, they have to pull. Maura?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Yes.
So close, yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.